Good morning, I'm Jessica Stroh. Thank you for joining the Fort Bend Voters League. We're a nonpartisan nonprofit group dedicated to informing and educating voters while bringing civility to public discourse.
And hello, I'm Farah Ahmed, and I'm glad to be here with the two ladies candidates. We have Xenath Mita and Sapna Patel, and I want to make sure that you all have this opportunity to hear from both of them.
And we're going to get started with a hot button topic in the city, which is the statement by the city that it will purchase the Imperial property for $50 million. Sapna, what are your thoughts on that?
Did you say my name?
Yes, sorry.
It's S A P A N A. My thoughts are, I don't know, the property is not being purchased for $50 million. I don't even think that's been disclosed yet. I think that commitment that they announced was $35 million, and there was a $3 million study that they're doing. But my thoughts are, you know, it's a great idea because Imperial needs a solution. They have been at this for many, many years. Many developers have come in and they have not been successful. So their idea to purchase the property and to move this thing along is a wonderful idea. I hope that they have, I'm a real estate agent, I hope they are purchasing the property at a good price, that somebody has negotiated this price. So moving forward, I think it's the two properties where the Char House is located and the other piece that's already owned by a developer. And the third piece would be where Suba is. All these three properties will have to be acquired by the city. And once they do acquire this property, I hope to be on planning and zoning after that city council to discuss what would be the best use for that property. It means a lot to the people that live there to, for this property to survive, and they're planning on doing mixed use. I'd like to know what's going to be different than what Puma had proposed, because Puma project did not move forward. And right now, I think the biggest issue is get the property purchased and doing all the due diligence that's required. I was hoping that we would have had more transparency on how they came to this decision. I believe that initially it was on the consent agenda, and the same day they had moved it back to the city council discussing it in the closed session behind closed doors. And I do know that some of that information needs to be confidential, because they're acquiring this property. But I'm hoping in the year, in the months that are coming, there's more transparency about this kind of money, because they are still Track Five, there is still the Johnson Development Property, and there are other projects. So I hope that they're going to bring us more information.
Thank you. Xenath, what are your thoughts?
Okay, so from what I understand through my research, my knowledge, I'm a former journalist, so I have to be very thorough in what information I get and also in the people that I've interviewed. So as far as I know, Sugar Land has been left at the altar too many times since the Sugar Factory closed 20 years ago. Okay, remember, we have to remember that number. The current owner was unwilling to sell to private developers at what would have made the project, the private project viable. However, with the city as the purchaser, we are able to finance the purchase through sales tax that can only be used for economic development purposes. Now, that half cent sales tax was passed by the voters years ago, giving one-fourth of one cent to each of the two economic development corporations, the Sugar Land Development Corporation and the Sugar Land 4B Corporation. Also, hotel occupancy taxes will be used as well. So the city plans to engage a developer to build out the historic district into a walkable, mixed-use district, much like Town Square. And those of you that have lived in Sugar Land, like I have, before Town Square developed and before some of the other buildings and housing developed, obviously see where taxes are coming to us from and how Town Square has grown. So the other thing that the city can also do is when the land value has grown sufficiently, then the city may choose to sell the property. Remember that much of the sales tax collected from non-residents, and these are, you know, quite a few people that come from outside of Sugar Land, that benefits us in Sugar Land.
I actually have a follow-up question, because I think in the Imperial area, there's also a lot of plans and maybe already pre-approved by city council and planning and zoning is apartments. I mean, we hear about apartments and the number of units and things like that. Are there any concerns that are, that you have or that have been presented to you about apartments in that particular development and how that's going to be handled with traffic and density and things like that? Do you have any thoughts on that? Either one of you can speak.
So I can, I can continue on. So I, I'm not sure about standalone apartments and if that has been approved already. I would only approve quality projects. So I have, through my research, through my discussions with several city council members, past and current, this is something that I have decided on how I would approve. So it's a four-part, that's a Xenath Mita four-part. So when we do any development, is it going to prevent any current property owner from the use or enjoyment of their property? We have to think about the people that are already there. Two, will it overwhelm the schools? We have some of the best schools, right? A lot of our families have moved to Sugar Land because of the schools. I did, and I've stayed here when, I've always worked in Houston. Three, will it overwhelm the traffic, the drainage, the water, the sewer, the streets, the police, the fire? All of that work hand in hand with what we built. And the fourth thing is, will the development be first-rate and a credit to the city of Sugar Land? That's the four-part Xenath Mita, you know, checklist that I would put out there.
Thank you. Sapna, what are your thoughts on this, on apartments?
Can you repeat, can you repeat that question? Are you talking about?
Yeah, I just, so we were talking about the Imperial property, and there's been a lot of discussion about apartments on that property. There's been some pre-approved amounts, but there's always a concern on density, traffic congestion issues on apartments on those particular areas. That's part of the whole Imperial project. What are your thoughts on that?
So first of all, you know, as far as standalone apartments, that's not happening. There was that land use plan that was developed from 2013 to 2017. All the four activity centers that are going to be developed, it's going to be mixed use. So that's not going to be a concern. But the apartments will be coming at that location to make the project profitable, right? And so that is why the Char House is going to be redeveloped, and they're going to save this Char House so other development can come there. And yes, traffic will be, a traffic study will be required. That was one of the things that I had opposed on planning and zoning when it came to planning and zoning a couple of years ago, because there weren't, the questions that I had asked were not being answered on that day, and that is the reason I had opposed it. Now, one of the things that was a concern for me is there's a train track there. And the train, they had said the train passes there 33 times a day, right? So we want a beautiful development here, like the town center that we are so proud of. We, but we need to make sure a traffic study is done prior to that, because we didn't see a traffic study when we had approved that property. And then we also need to, the apartments are coming in that area. It's, it's going to be fine, because it's going to be mixed use. There's going to be office, there's going to be restaurants, and it'll be something we're very proud of, like the Sugar Land Town Center. So hopefully, when that time comes, we'll have more information, and I'm sitting on the dais to make those decisions.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies, for that. I get to ask the next question, and it's kind of a two-part question. One is, what is the one thing that you're proud that the city has done, but also what's the one thing that you think the city still has not addressed properly and really needs to do a better job with it? I'll start off with Xenath, if that's okay?
I'm doing the mute as you had assigned me to do.
No problem. Xenath, did you want to answer that one?
Yes, I will. I will certainly answer that. So I'm very proud of so many things in Sugar Land that we've done, which has attracted people from outside. The Culinary Park, Oyster Creek Park, we've got Constellation Field, we've got Sugar Land Memorial Park. I have friends that come from outside of Sugar Land that walk with me in the Sugar Land Memorial Park. So those areas are great. We need to certainly bring more families and people outside to our Natural Science Museum. We've got a beautiful Natural Science Museum and, you know, and other areas. So I think if you had asked me this question 10 years ago, I would have said, you know, Town Center. But today, Town Center is very well-known, and Smart Financial is doing quite well on its own. Maybe an area that we need to consider, and you're, if you, if you can sort of rephrase that question again, Farah, is it what you want to see happen in Sugar Land, or is it what I would?
It's what, it's what you think they could be doing, a better job needs to be properly addressed. You know, what's the one thing they could do a better job, or one thing that maybe something new to be brought in that the city doesn't have, a new amenity or something?
Um, I think we are expanding our bike trails and outdoor space, which is great for young professionals. I know when I was in my twenties and thirties, I used that with my children a lot. The, the main thing, though, is bringing young professionals. We do not have a place where they can really thrive and grow. Many of them are very successful. They do want something that's to go to and leave. They don't want the big yards, the big homes. So, you know, we've got to think about a way to want that generation to move here. Because when I do planning, I do not one-year, five-year, 10-year. And anything I do, I think 50 years, 100 years, 200 years. What's this place going to be like for my great-grandchildren and your great-grandchildren? And what would your great-grandchildren want here? And how do we establish that today for them? How do we continue doing what we're doing that's working? And how do we bring more to the city that will keep them here, work here, use their time and energy here, give back locally, boost our economy, and keep us thriving?
Thank you, Xenath. Sapna, what are your thoughts on this?
So can you repeat the question?
Yeah, sure. It's like, what's the one thing that you're proud that the city has done, but what is also the one thing that you think the city has not addressed properly or needs to address further?
Okay, so let's start with what I'm proud of. I'm proud of the fact that they give out a lot of information, like the bond tracker. But lots of times, the residents don't know how to get to it. I'm super proud of the fact that Wallace brought U of H, Jimmy brought the ballpark, he brought the Cullinan Park, the Smart Financial Center. I'm super proud of Habarchik, who brought the Town Center. We have a lot to be proud of. We have the airport. They've done a lot of great things in the city. This is why. People come here because of Fort Bend I C. They stay here because it's a safe city, and we have many amenities. It's like a little town of our own. I always say to people, Sugar Land's like a Hallmark movie, you know? You go everywhere, you, if you want some information, you can get it pretty easily. Our mayor is accessible, the city council people are accessible, and we have brought many things that makes us so proud of Sugar Land. The one thing that I think they could have done a better job with, and it's dear and near to my heart, is what happened with the pet shelter. They could have handled this much better. Now, from a year ago to now, the budget has increased, as probably everybody knows. I think it's actually, they've spent quite a bit of money, but there's less dogs there. So I think we had 1,200 dogs a year ago to now 800. This is a big issue in new territory. Also, Telfair, we have lots of dogs and cats running around. This is one thing that is very important to me, that when I get on city council, I'm very excited about the new pet shelter they're going to be building, right there by 90, where that discount center is. And that project will probably be done in three years. And I think the, the fact that they're moving on that, that was part of the bond. Initially, I think 2019, it was like $6 million they had put in the bond. And after that, that did not get built. It was another location. This last bond that we just approved was an additional $12 million. And I think there's another $2 million that comes from private funding. So we've got them, we've got the plan to get this going. And when I'm on city council, this one is a project, I think, that we really need to get going on. There's a lot of unhappy dogs out there and cats out there, and we need a solution quickly. So that one, I think we could have done a better job with.
Very good. I'm going to ask you a question. With, if you're on the city council, how will you work with others that you disagree with, whether they're residents or other city council members? And Sapna, let's start with you.
Okay, so any, I mean, I do, I'm in a job that sometimes we disagree with the other agents, and we have to come to, first, we go to try to figure out what our common ground is. Okay? It's very important to know, like, what's the common ground between all of us? Because there are seven on the dais. You know, it's not just important to get elected and sit on that seat, but it's important to work with the others, collaborate with others, and know them, and know, like, what is the reason you're disagreeing? And then actively listen. This is very hard for many people. When you're so passionate about something, you have to actively listen to the others and figure out where are they coming from? And then come to a conclusion that's good for everyone. When I say everyone, the residents. You know, in the end, it's not about me, it's about the job. And lots of times, I think people get elected and forget, it's, they think it's about them. It's about the job you do while you're there. When you leave, nobody remembers your name. They remember the job. The job is important, and I am going to make sure that that stays with me. I noticed that with many, many people who get elected, all the things they had said when they were running for office, when you go back to them, they forget. It's the job that's important. And I think with city council, they do, they get along pretty well on the dais. I don't know what happens behind the scenes in the closed sessions, but I'm going to make sure that I'm part of the conversations, I'm active, I read up on things that are sent to me before the meeting, and I'm ready for conversations that are, and resolutions and solutions that are best for my residents.
Very good. Xenath, your thoughts?
So I've always worked in a career where there's going to be opposing views. Currently, I'm a university professor, and I have faculty that see things differently. Prior to that, I worked with nonprofits. And to try and share that information, you truly have to listen, you have to hear where they come from, you have to understand why they feel what they feel. One of the, and prior to that, I was a journalist. So today, when I look back, my years of experience in every part of my career has always been to make sure that you understand the audience. I teach and create courses in public relations. And as you listen, as you hear them, and even when you don't see what they see, you can't put things up and create a wall, as many candidates in the past have done, and then change your course when you see completely that they are against what you are saying. I stick to what I say, and I have that ability to work with others. Doesn't matter the demographics, their background, the color, ethnicity. I have the ability to share, you know, and create that awareness. There's several parts to making people see things as you see. Currently, the city council members work wonderfully. They're, they've been accessible to me, they've talked to me. With my 20-plus years of experience in service in Sugar Land, I've known many of them in the past. And I've known former city council members just as well than some current ones. So having them understand where you come from, why, you have to, you know, you have to be involved. You have to show them and prove to them through action. There's an art to persuasion. And that art to persuasion, besides listening and hearing, is showing action that is in a comfortable manner to the people that you are trying to persuade. So working with people of different thoughts and, you know, ways of thinking is, is something I've done pretty much in, in my entire 30-plus year career.
Thank you, ladies. I, I get to ask the next question, which is about Sugar Land 95. It was about, I would say, seven, eight years ago, that 95 bodies were found connected to the convict leasing, part of our history in the Sugar Land area. And it was always kind of touch and go in terms of what role the city itself wants to play in this, realizing, of course, that convict leasing and all that took place before the city became a modern city in the 50s, where it was incorporated. But what are your thoughts on that in terms of the city participating in recognizing this part of its history, the area, and, and also really in terms of the city embracing celebrations where that could be showcased, like Juneteenth? My understanding is the city doesn't actually have a Juneteenth, Juneteenth program or celebration in connection with the Sugar Land 95, that maybe other government entities do. And Juneteenth is now a federal holiday. So just wanted to know your thoughts on that. And if it's okay, I guess we can start with, I have Sapna on that one to start first.
Sure. Well, first of all, this was horrific. Okay? It happened right there on the Telfair land where they were putting this school. I never really, I also work very well with Fort Bend I C. I have been a very active PTA member, PTO member, and I regularly go to meetings. And when this came up, this was horrible. And I never really thought that was the greatest location for the technical center. I, I really wished it was in a place more central where other schools could have been using it, right? That, and this happened, and at least they did get a proper burial. All that is done, okay? Because, I mean, I pass by it every day, right there on Chatham. And so now they, they've even got a location. A museum is being built, right, by Dexter? So that's happening. And so I'm sure this is going to be showcased, and, and there will be memory about what happened here. That's probably going to be a big part of that museum. What else? I wanted, I guess, a little bit more clarity from you, what you think the city should be doing? Because I, this is Fort Bend I C land, that Fort Bend I C has addressed it very well. It is a done, it's done now. So I guess this is kind of from the past, and I would like to know what you think the city should be doing with this.
I think that we were asking you all, what are your thoughts on this? Because there are citizens that feel the city needs to also take a role in this, and this is part of the city's history. And the city at one time wanted to take kind of ownership of this narrative, because it is called the Sugar Land 95, and it is part of the history of this area. But just wanted your thoughts on that, if you feel that it's appropriately being addressed now by other government entities, or you feel the city can play a role in this?
The city could play a role in everything, but they have to prioritize. There are so many other things right now. And this happened back in 2019. I feel like for now, it is resolved, you know, the things that needed to be done got done. The museum is coming. I, I think it would not be a priority for the city of Sugar Land to be active in this at this particular time. Now, I will find out more about this information to see what happened, what their plans before, but celebrating, having a celebration on Juneteenth, and it never happened. I will find out that information. That is not a bad idea, okay? But as far as my concern is that that happened, what, 2018? Yeah, 2018. We've had the pandemic since then. A lot of other stuff were going on, that many things were put at the back burner, because 2018, the pandemic happened, everything was about the pandemic. So that, I'm not opposed to finding out what else the city could do, but as far as my knowledge, I don't think there's anything they can do right now.
Thank you. Xenath, how about, how about you, your thoughts?
So I definitely believe we have a rich history here. We are such an inclusive community, and this history somehow needs to be celebrated. So I certainly would look into doing something for Juneteenth here in Sugar Land. I think I can certainly speak to current city council members and see what they will prioritize going forward with this. You just heard, you know, the historical information from Sapna. So to add to that, because we are a diverse community, and we do, you know, consider so many different backgrounds and historical things here in Sugar Land, we certainly should look into this. And I will, I will ask that question and see what they can do, what city council can do. And if I voted as your next city council member, certainly I would try and move forward with something to create, you know, to create some sort of solace for the ones that are feeling that, that pain or that hurt.
Thank you for those answers. This question's kind of a fun one. What's your favorite frequent destination in Sugar Land? Where do you spend time and what do you like to do there? Sapna, let's start with you.
Okay, I think it's her turn.
That's fine.
I'll start with me. So a little bit about me, I love people, okay? I'm, I'm big on listening, getting to know people. And one of my favorite places is the Town Center. Of course, Financial Center, I'll get into that in a minute. I'm walking distance from the Smart Financial Center, and I frequently walk there. And I love the Town Center because it has so much, right? There's restaurants, there is an area they have just redeveloped right in front of City, City Hall, where they have put the, the grass in. And so the kids can play there, we can eat, still watch them. It's such an easy place for people to meet at, like after a planning and zoning meeting, or like meeting somebody for dinner. It's, it's, it's my favorite place. It really is. And, and yes, there are the parks, and all those are there for weekends. Like, I love the dog park. We just had a picnic there, our neighborhood, last weekend. There's a lot of great things, so it's hard to say the one thing, but I would, if I had to say one thing, it would be, it would be the Town Center. And no, I think it's not old. It's still living and breathing, and that is a big base, sales tax base for us. And so I am big on spending money in Sugar Land. I, I rarely go out of Sugar Land to spend money. This is where my money is. And, and I, I hope, after being on city council, that we are, we can do something to help some of those businesses that have shut down, and they shouldn't shut down. We have some great places there. And if we all have that same goal, nobody will leave. Everybody will stay forever.
Very good. Xenath, what are your thoughts on that?
So I have two, and I'm going to share both. So when I need my quiet time, and I need to be with my neighbors, and we go for walks, we are at the Sugar Land Memorial Park. We meet there. It's a great place to have picnics, even with our families, just to walk, to really enjoy, to meet people there. We've met other friends from other neighborhoods there many times. And so we live in a very close knit neighborhood. And so we do a lot there. The other place, which I do with my family very, very frequently, and if, if my boys are, you know, both in town, is the Town Center. We are regular customers there at four restaurants. We, we go quite regularly just to walk around and have dessert there, if it's just me and my husband. We bring friends from Houston there at least once a month and treat, you know, we, we take turns who's treating who. But we bring those people to Sugar Land because we love it. And obviously, it's, it's been mentioned before, when you bring people there and they come from other, you know, other cities, it's increasing our sales tax, and, and we're, we're doing things for Sugar Land. So we have a lot of things that are wonderful in Sugar Land. But if you, if you give us just a choice of one, and in my case, two, then it would be those two.
Well, ladies, you know, as we're closing up on this conversation, and thank you again for, for being here with us, I want you to take a minute or so and kind of tell a little bit about yourself, but also include why the voters in your district, District Four, should support you in this city council race. Xenath, if you can go first?
So I'm Dr. Xenath Mita. I'm a university professor, and I live in Sugar Land. I've lived here for over 30 years. Both my boys were raised and were born, born in Houston hospitals, but the minute they came home, they've been in Sugar Land and they went to FBI I C schools. I have been involved from day one in the PTOs for both my boys and all three of their schools, elementary, middle, and high school. And then I got involved over 22 years ago, giving service directly to our community, benefiting our community, whether it was Child Advocates of Fort Bend, on which I'm on the advisory board right now, but I have been involved with them for 22 years, or when I was the chair of membership for Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce for five years, and I worked with amazing people, amazing leaders, and brought so many small businesses, medium-sized businesses, to work with one another, to grow and to help one another. And when I was on the board for the, you know, And when I was on the board for the, you know, Literacy Council of Fort Bend, there were so many of our people that needed tutors for computer literacy. They didn't have their GEDs. They were getting their US citizenship, and they needed tutors and help. And I helped get people to tutor and fund. And I've been involved just in neighborhood communities as well. I solve problems. I love working with people. I listen, I hear, I visualize, I see, and I make things happen. I may do it quietly. I don't ever create disputes. I try and help them see, create awareness for why this is needed, and I am able to work with them. Of course, not everybody will see things the way I do, and that's okay. I persevere. I move forward. I do it with positivity and perseverance. And if you ask my neighbors, if you ask my community, if you ask the external community, if you go to any of the places that I have been involved with, whether it's the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, the, you know, Literacy Council of Fort Bend, child advocates, or any other organization, the PTOs that I've stepped in, they will give you an honest response of who I am, what I am, and what I've done for the citizens and the constituents of the Sugarland. And I will continue to do that if I am voted as your next City Council member for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Sapna.
Hi, my name is Sapna. I have lived in Sugarland for about 26 years, and ever since I've moved here. I can go through my list of all the different things I've done. I've been the president of the PTA, I've been president of our HOA. I am the current member of Planning and Zoning. But I would like to describe a little bit different way of why I am the best person for this job. I have been here in District Four, working along with the other families and other committees, not just being on boards, because being on board is easy. You go to meetings, you donate money. I have been on the ground. I was the one there when Commonwealth got kicked out of Commonwealth Elementary. I was the one there when there was discussions about increasing capacity at Ford Settlement, but in the end, it didn't happen because we didn't, we could not increase the cafeteria and, and the library. And that is why now, in the new schools, they start out with a cafeteria and a library that's enlarged. I was the, and, and that's the same thing I'm gonna do when we are talking about the pet shelter. In the future, if we want to vet there, we need to make sure that there is ample space there, so we don't get into hurdles. I was the one there when they were trying to build 900 apartments right here in Track Five with, with a comprehensive plan that got changed that nobody knew about. I was frontliner on the committee to make sure that we got the petition done, and that did get overturned. And in the end, the land use plan was changed. I also was the one that was there when we decided, we had issues at Clements when the overcrowding happened. And I was on the committee with Carol Scott to make sure that the students at Clements got all the attention they needed, and all the stuff was not going to a program that was GSA. It was also happening for the students. I was there in front lines during the power plant issue, which is not even, wasn't even an issue in District Four. It was a District Two issue, and the, the HOA was having a hard time getting it in a meeting with the mayor. I got involved, and Joe was very accommodating. He spent an hour with us, so the residents could listen to him at, at the museum. I have been there. I have, I, I join things, and it's not just for a minute. I stay there four or five years until the job I want to get done gets done. I have never left. I have been there from the beginning as the PTA President of Commonwealth Elementary, PTO President of the Ford Settlement Middle School. I have, I was a former, I was on Fort Bend ISD Foundation Committee for over 10 years. I have chaired, I've, I've been a chair for the tickets. I have been there. There's not a single thing that I, I have got involved in that I quit. I am not a quitter. I stay until the job is done. I've been part of Sugarline 101. I've taken the Police Academy. I have taken the DA's class. I've taken everything. There's not a single thing that was offered to me that I did not take and take the opportunity to learn. Why do I join all these things? People are always asking me. It's because the more things I learn, the more programs I get involved in, then I can be knowledgeable, so I can resolve problems. So that when someone else needs help with something, that they can call me, and I know where to direct them. That's what this is about, you know? It's, it's about, the, the position is about being there for the residents and keeping Sugarland the best place to live. That is my goal. There is nothing that I, we're gonna do when I'm a City Council that does not keep this place the best place to live. There are a lot of people talk about things, oh, the 4% land is left. But we need to celebrate all the things that we have done and keep them that way. And I celebrate diversity. Many people talk about diversity and like, oh, but what are you gonna do to make sure that when somebody comes to City Council that's not like you, that says things you don't like? How do you address them? They're citizens, they're taxpayers. We need to treat everyone with respect. And, and I think you spoke about, one of your questions was about, what do you do when somebody emails you that you don't like? I mean, you have to address it. You can't ignore it, because when you ignore it, like, the items that I think you had talked about where the agenda, if something is not on the agenda, can, can residents speak? It should never get to that point. When the residents are emailing you, you should be able to meet with them. You should be able to talk to them. If it's gotten to that point, we didn't do our job. We, we weren't communicating. We weren't being open. And if I get on City Council, and the people who vote for me that are in District Four, there is nobody who can say that I haven't been there. I've been at the front lines of every issue that's happened in District Four. Right now, the newest issue we have is they widened the lanes, right, on university? But they kind of stopped it at such a weird spot that if you don't notice at dark, you can hit that pole. That's one of the things that, that needs to be addressed. And I am addressing every issue that comes to me. I was not even on City Council. And I am the type of person who does not give up, and I follow through. When I say I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it. I don't give up. And that's what we need on City Council. We don't just need someone who's talking about what they've done. It doesn't matter. This is just a nice list to say, I was involved in many things. We need people who are there to provide solutions, get them done, and listen to our residents. Every single candidate has put transparency on their piece of paper. Okay, what does transparency mean? Like, yes, there's a lot of confidential things that will need to be done when we're on City Council. But we do need to take that word literally, and we need to involve residents. With the Sugarland, the Char House Project, one of the first things I want to get done is, when this moves forward, we should have a committee of residents, City Council, PNZ, so everyone feels involved in this project. This is our history. This is our namesake. I don't want it to be just about, hey, we bought the land, get, get someone involved and, and let it go. You know, it, it needs to be, that's the kind of city I want, and that is why I am running. I, I am very excited about running, and I hope to earn your vote. If you want to meet me, talk to me, my number is everywhere public. Like, I'm always accessible. Give me a call. And if you want to just read about me, you can go to my website, sapnapatelforsugarland.com.
Thank you very much, both of you, for joining us today. And I appreciate you taking the time, as well as giving good and thorough answers, very well-researched answers. So just want to give everyone a heads up that early voting starts April 22nd, and Election Day is Saturday, May 3rd, and we hope to see you at the polls.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Farah.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.